Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the town new post planning board is adjourned tonight, 2015. First up, as usual, on our agenda is a review and approval of the minutes of February 23rd. Motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We'd like to make one modification to the discussion about the clearing of ready for missing. Do you have a need to review the plans and approve it? So I'll send it to Kelly.
Okay, so we'll hold these off until final approval at our next meeting then. Next up on our agenda is public hearing, have a motion of public hearing for LP builders. Subdivision?
Second.
Is it second?
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, is anybody here to speak at the public hearing? Okay. Well, I'd rather keep any audience if you could sit down unless you have a lot.
Uh, not too much.
Okay. Nayman?
Uh, I'm Hugh Garrison, I'm an associate at Grant Lions. Jonathan here on previous occasions. And we represent the Lions, Virginia Arab stuff, was in Tunkey, Cedar Ridge Road, and Minn to move, who lives at Cedar Ridge Road. They both reside downtown, or excuse me, downrange from the proposed subdivision. Um, we've addressed this board at previous occasions, and we feel that we fully stated our concerns with the proposed subdivision, so we would like to address a review, um, tonight, which is just about the speaker, and why we would like to have a positive declaration, issue by the planning board, in the event of your, your determination with an environmental review. Um, so we understand that this is a pretty small subdivision, and, you know, having a posdoc such as small, um, subdivision might be a little overkill or a little odd to have, but in these particular circumstances, we think it's meritant. Um, again, to have a posdoc, it's a very low legal threshold, all that needs to be shown is that there's at least one potential significant adverse environmental impact, and based on the location of the proposed subdivision, on the steep slopes, we think that there's at least two, um, significant adverse impacts that may be a result if the subdivision were to be approved. Um, the first one is based on the stormwater maintenance system that proposed for the system. Um, it's, the post-plan states simply that the individual lot owners will maintain for future years, and, um, we don't think that's adequate. There's, Eric and Vincent have already experienced a lot of damage from existing runoffs. Um, Eric's come before you to explain the situation, he has great explained the property damage that he and Vincent had. Um, he had a really great blow-up picture of this four-foot culvert on Vincent's property that, with an average rainstorm, was completely submerged, and the water over the driveway. Uh, and again, that was just from an average rainstorm. Eric has experienced a lot of tree damage that some of these trees have been there for fifty or sixty years, and based on the flooding, they've died off, and he's had to have them removed. Um, and with a simple plan to just have the future lot owners take care of the stormwater maintenance, it's inadequate. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered. Who exactly is going to be maintaining it? How it's going to be maintained on those steep slopes? How often? Um, so, we think that if those systems were to fail, they would have a significant adverse environmental impact. The second issue, um, is based on the proposed septic systems. Our consulting engineer, John Bonnor from Hudson Miami, had expressed on a lot of previous occasions that these, these septic systems don't meet the New York State Department of Health, um, requirements, and even though they may have had the Ulster County Department of Health approvals, um, there's reasons that those New York State's, uh, requirements are in place, and it's based on the steepness of the slopes. If, again, these septic systems were to fail, or can't properly ma- be maintained, you're gonna have more pollutants, more contaminants, and now with the septic system, possible sewage going downgrade to these properties, and now you have environmental impact, and a possible health impact. So, again, for a posdoc, it's a rather low standard, it just has to be shown that at least one environmental impact may occur, and that that impact will be significant. And based on the proposed design and plans, we think that, um, there's at least two that should be considered, and that's why we would seek a posdoc for this case.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we do have just a very brief letter, um, I can provide it to Kelly if you would like, but thank you for your time.
Anybody else wishing to make any public comment? Uh, we got a note from, um, the applicant requesting that the public hearing be continued to April 9th meeting. Okay, am I right? April... April 13th meeting. I can eventually read it. Um, but, um, request to continue the public hearing, we're still waiting data from the applicant, that's why, uh, the public hearing's being extended. Um, request a motion to extend a public hearing for the LP builders to the April 13th meeting.
Just ask the motion to make reference to the extension of time due to the applicant's request.
As noted. You want a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is, um, public comment. We'll have to stop thinking now, the planning board secretary leaves. Um, anybody wish to make any public comment? Not having any, first up on the agenda, Diamond Car Wash. Okay. Did you guys actually make it out to the site?
I believe there was a site visit with the town engineer and the owner, and Chris Marks, and Chris Baker.
Site visit yesterday, Diamond Wash.
Thank you for waiting in line.
Yeah, we're in line, yeah, it's crazy.
Well, that's a good sign.
Yeah.
Um, Dave, run a summary of where you are and...
Yeah, I've, I've been away.
Well, we know that.
I did have a draft memo that I just, I tried to put together so we could at least have something to talk about tonight.
Oh wait, did we get that in our email, or?
No. That's the one. Yep. Wow. You had the wrong one. Okay, go ahead Dave.
The biggest thing that we're looking for, still looking for, is some schematics of what's there as far as the, the water and the sewer systems. Uh, we had a meeting at the car wash with the owner, and we discussed what we were looking for, some of the concerns we had. We really need to have a, a document that shows what's out there. I know we've, the existing, the site plan copy was provided, and there's been several changes, including like the property boundary and easements and everything else that's gone on between the approval of this and, uh, what we have out there now, so...
This, we submitted the original site plan for when the car wash was built, which you requested. Our site plan reflects how it currently exists, including when the site...
Yeah, but it really doesn't, because there's some tanks that are missing on that, I couldn't look that up. It reflects what's shown on this document, and as far as tanks. Like, I know there's some more out there that we looked at. Um, I need to know where the piping is, both water and sewer, and I, you know, I've been saying that since last spring.
The owner did have the, the water lines from the wells located to the building, um, so that's been completed. Um, any other underground tanks or lines that were not on the original site plan or the previous amended site plan, our office is not aware of, so...
The people who need to worry, as they exist today on-site, is fully documented in the last available.
There's another tank that isn't shown here. Which, we've got, we've got four tanks that are showing here in front of your automatic. There's another tank that's got the meter in it.
Correct.
That's where one of these manholes are.
Yeah, it's a square cupboard with a...
There are tanks underneath self-service bay.
Doesn't just drink.
And they don't know where the toilet is hooked up to the sanitary system, it's just...
Well, we did know on the plan where the existing toilet facility is, and as far as...
I know where the toilet is. It's part that's above ground, I need to know where it is below ground. I need to know where the piping runs from this facility to the sewer.
We know where it is. I had submitted it, uh, to the firm, because I had it listed.
Alright, we have the sewer cleanouts noted, exactly where the line goes below the concrete, and then, we can take an assumption, but, or we can have the same people that located the well lines can hit the exact, precise location.
I did, I...
You said the water line, you had those located.
Yes.
But I don't see that on this document.
I had, I had that on the...
Okay. That information I'm really looking for.
Okay.
We're also still looking for a description of your system, your process system, just so we, we just want to document this.
Didn't I not try to make this...
The sewer's had some, the sewer sector's had some real problems in the past, and we just want to know what we've got here, know the flows that we've got, and go on from there.
Alright, so, why are you coming in? You know where the water lines from the well through the side are?
Yes.
Have to show them on a diagram. Um, have to make some assumption of, or where the toilet facility connects to the sewer pipe. Um, and then a narrative of water usage.
Yep.
What's recycled, what isn't, and that's just the narrative, so we have some documentation on that.
And I, and I had placed that on a, I created a PowerPoint document, and it located all the internal facilities inside the room, and Mr. President requested.
That's great.
And I had placed all of the water usage for that system on that document.
Okay. Well, PowerPoint.
Because that's the only thing I knew how to use.
No problem with that, you can submit, um, if that's the outstanding issues we have on this thing.
The wetlands permit, is that, um, let's see?
Right.
Yeah.
The expanded landscape area is located...
The goes unannished.
No, no.
There's a, uh, this enhanced buffer area located within the town's wetland buffer.
Okay.
Um, that according to the wetland law you submit, because it's an enlargement of that area.
So, um, so if it needs a permit, does that be contingent on this being approved? We have to, that's a method for this.
Could they also, it says expanded landscape area, could they unexpand it? Make life easier? You know?
Part of the existing buffer is in, uh, the existing landscape is in the wetland buffer.
So which is, what is, what's...
Here's, here's the wetland buffer runs right through here.
Okay.
So this is the existing landscape. We're extending this a little bit to where this park is, so... The existing is okay, as long as you don't enlarge it, if you enlarge it, then you need to...
So we can leave it as is?
That would sure be the suggestion. I'm not sure if I'm gonna get a...
I'm thick-headed, but I'm a little skeptical.
Yeah.
Usually we don't answer that, you know, it's, usually more, not less.
Well, that tree's somewhere else.
But not in the water, okay.
Also like to know on your, on your really good day, when everything is, you know, it's that February day after a snow, when the sun comes out.
Actually, it's today. That was this weekend, uh, that would be in the automatic, in a 24-hour period, I had 100 cars.
Um, how many cars total did you have?
So there's, so there's, um, the 100 cars that went through the automatic in a 24-hour period, and the max throughput of the automatic is 12 cars per hour. And then, in the self-serve phase, I did about 180 to 190 cars.
That was a good day.
It was a great day.
And that's, that's all reclaimed water, right?
It's 90% reclaimed.
90%.
The rinse is not...
The rinse is not reclaimed.
Yeah, there's a note here that says it's 100%.
Which, no, I updated on that PowerPoint with the, the water usage.
Okay. If I can see that PowerPoint, and we can figure out where I have to go on this.
Yeah, because I fully documented every tank, the throughput on the reclaim system, which is, uh, has a 450 gallon capacity, and of 40 gallon per minute cycle rate.
Exactly what I need. Good.
And that's why I documented it all.
Okay, if I can see that, just print that out for me.
Okay, I'm ready. So we'll, uh, reset it.
Okay.
I'll get that to Chris, and to both Chris's for the sewer.
I should at least summarize, I had a bunch of discussions with Chris Marks on the sewer, and, um, he seems pretty good with kind of the big picture idea, which is, he needs to know how much water they're using daily, and what's the quality of the water, those are really the two main things. And the issue of multiple lines coming in with the wells is gonna be resolved, so it's all gonna be metered and cleared, so we're gonna know how much water's being used, and then, we're gonna have a, a sampling pit, so the tank can come in anytime they want and take a sample. So those two kind of big picture parameters are gonna be resolved on this, and there'll be a maintenance plan as well. So I've talked to Chris quite a bit, and I think I'm comfortable that in the end, you know, he, we can do what, what he needs to be satisfied.
Just need to document all this, look where on the right track they're definitely going.
Yeah, I also, I know you have one of the, uh, the easement in letter, so I gave you the full, there's the full deed to the property that has the, the, um, easements, as they were provided in the deed. And I also provided the last sewer bill that I had, in addition to some work that I had, still has septic documents and things when they were in there, you know, looking at the field, because I had a blockage at the restriction.
Okay. Good. If I can get that PowerPoint, that'd be great, I'll go with that with Chris, too.
There's all the lighting, you haven't made it? Well, I thought, I'm still working on lighting on this.
Looks like the ball pack units that's gonna be pulled up somewhere above the sign, is that right?
Um, in the, inside the bays, or on the sign?
Site lighting will be changed where applicable to be full cut-offs, sign light plan sheet and photometrics, okay. Please note, two of the tall light fixtures indicated on the Central Hudson are not owned or operated by the car wash.
I actually looked at those light fixtures, they appear to be, um, dark, you know, like full-cut-on dark-skY fixture types, but they're not, they're not...
They're not on my letter bill.
They're in the easement. The sign, is that right?
The sign, we provided a cut sheet on the sign at the road, we're talking about the two, there's two tall light fixtures on the, what would be the westerly, I'm sorry, easterly side of the property, they're in the Central Hudson easement, they're tall, they're on tall light poles.
Okay, those are the Central Hudson Cobra heads, or...
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Those are the strongest light fixtures that, like the property.
But I'm curious, on this, you're putting two new fixtures by the sign.
On the sign, so what happened was, uh, in October, a young man, uh, decided to rearrange my sign, and knocked it down, uh, so I had to have it rebuilt, and, uh, the old units were floodlight type fixtures that were beaming up, and I, uh, in redoing the sign properly, I acquired LED nightlight caps that beam down onto the sign, uh, to ensure, you know, night's value.
Is that on the pole, or is it part of the sign?
No, no, it's on the actual, the street sign, it's on the 4455.
And the, the fixtures inside the bays, those exist now?
Those exist today.
Okay.
Those were done through, I guess, uh, an LED lime energy conversion program before I had purchased the property.
So there's really no exterior lighting except for the tall poles plus this down?
Correct, the, the only other exterior light is one that's motion activated by the chorn, chorn changer, and it's a fluorescent that's in the, uh...
It's in the soffit.
In the soffit.
The side of the building, in the soffit.
Yeah, in a, in a floodlight, uh, that exists by the automatic bay beaming down on the motion detector, uh, for the auto cashier.
So I'm curious for these photometric readings to take.
These were taken last summer, uh, Michael Espe of our office actually went out there with a meter, and took all these, these, um, lighting levels. Um, so these were actual field verified, and it says on here what exactly, the exact date it was taken, it was sometime last, the fall of August, I believe.
After the initial commentary came back. But I haven't, outside of the sign, which was due to negligence of the driver, I haven't made any modifications pending whatever request may come from the planning board.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, those, uh, tall light poles don't fall, too? So what happens if they go away? If the owner comes someday and says, because that means they provide the light?
They provide ancillary lighting that I don't depend on, I have proper lighting in the bays, and motion detectors in areas that, after hours, that would be activated to the property. But I mean, that light that's on the pole, you can see it from camp, or where it's positioned, but it's, because it's literally, I mean, literally, it's positioned right on the, uh, I don't even know if it's on my property, but it should be right on one.
One of them is, one of them is not.
I was wondering why it's different.
It's part of their easement, maybe for...
So drawn some?
Their utility poles that run through there, so...
We haven't, clearly, in my years working there, never lit up the right way.
They...
Uh, okay, uh, anything else, Dave? Want to move to the board?
Yeah, you can give this.
So, can I ask you a question, a lot, I'm just, out of curiosity, is that new with you, or is it always like that?
It's always been that way.
Oh, okay.
And one of the things that, uh, if I do this new automatic, I'm gonna be adding a second reclaim system, just for that, which is state-of-the-art.
For the rinse, too, or is that not possible?
For the, what happens is, the waxes and chemicals that are applied the last day, it has to be fresh water.
Yeah.
I mean, the, I mean, to install a system that would get you down to an acceptable level, non-fresh is probably six figures at minimum.
I think I'd have more than 100 car days.
Well, in all, and, to be quite candid, the reason why I seek the second automatic is really for about 15 days a year, you know, the weekend, like this weekend, more people probably went out of every eight cars that are coming in, see the line, and they turn around and go away. So it's not like I'm gonna be causing additional traffic.
Yeah.
The traffic's already coming and leaving. And I can tell you that, uh, every person that waits online for half hour, I tell them I'm waiting for planning board approval, they're like, yes, we hope you get it.
Anything else from any of your board members?
No, I'm just curious about whatever chemicals you have in the rinse, your wax, what that does in the sewer system.
The sewer system? Uh, it, from there, it goes through the reclaim system, so it goes through my sedimentary tank, sedimentary tank, through the, uh, filters before it's reused. So at that point, the thing goes through the thing, and I also...
Nothing's going to the sewer plant.
Whatever, uh, minimal stuff would come through, but it's all biodegradable materials.
Do we have a NDS? MSDS you got, or anything?
Uh, product sheet?
Yeah.
I can be more than happy to provide product sheets.
You know what's going on?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to provide it.
Write it down? Oh, I gotta write it down, he didn't write it down. Just wanna make sure it's not a slow kill of the system.
No, I, that's...
Chris also mentioned that the plant's in a lot better shape than it was, and they did those ionized improvements a few years back, and it's, it's doing a lot better.
It's dying. We got a couple pieces that are on our last leg.
Oh yeah, the equipment, yeah, it's not having the same, uh, clogging and overflow issues.
To add, um, the conditions that you did request on the plan, assisted with the stipulation settlement. Joe?
There you go.
A few years ago, there was a stipulation of settlement, uh, regarding discharge to, uh, the sewer district's facilities, and how its conditions were required the, then owner to comply with certain conditions of that stipulation. I reviewed proposed, uh, cycling conditions with Joe to incorporate the settlement conditions. Joe and the sewer superintendent are satisfied, I provided the output of the copy, I guess if you review it, if appropriate, add it to the settlement.
Yeah, it's fine, because I'm doing all of it, but one, one of the items did, uh, we're getting a little special from the town so far, but I'm not on the blue yet, so it's good.
Okay.
Can't read any of it, uh, but it's pretty much it, it's not real what we've talked about, but you can read the supply, okay?
Fair enough. Thank you.
There you go. Are you saying motel? It's not having the same clogging and overflow issues.
To add, the conditions that you proposed on the plan, assisted with the stipulation settlement. Joe?
Say again, oh.
A few years ago, there was a stipulation of settlement regarding discharge to the sewer district facilities. And how its conditions were required, the then owner to comply with certain conditions of that stipulation. I reviewed proposed cycling conditions with Joe to incorporate the settlement conditions. Joe and the sewer superintendent are satisfied, I provided the outline with the copy. I guess if you review it, it's appropriate to add it to the settlement.
Yeah, it's fine. Because I'm doing all of it, but one of the items did, we got an inspection from the town so far, but not on the building yet, so it's good.
Can't read any of it. But it's pretty much it, to talk real, what we've talked about, what you've agreed to supply, okay?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Eighty-seven motel? Kelly, you know who we are? Okay. Okay. So it's a site plan review of a demolition project, which is probably different than we had before, so there, that aside, moving through. But I reviewed the material today, did you have a chance to review?
Yeah, there's not really a lot, but with the EAF, new EAF is good. Curious about the building materials, if there's been any idea of what's in there that has to have special handling for the bungal?
We have not done any testing on any material at this point, as far as, so it's a, it's a... As far as asbestos, we will do it to do it, no asbestos.
I'm also curious, you're taking the slab out in the motel, you're saving the walk, and you're going to plant the middle with grass seed?
We're gonna, we're gonna crush as much of the concrete. We'll take the foundations down to one foot below grade, crush as much of the...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, we'll take down the foundations to one foot below grade, we'll crush it onsite, crush the concrete, use that as backfill material where needed. And then, obviously, we'll not have enough concrete to fill all the foundation areas. So we'll have to import material to make that up.
There are, there are crawl spaces in some of the buildings, and the other buildings are on slabs, so it's not consistent throughout.
This kind of gets into the future plans for this. I mean, taking the center out, leaving the walks and planting with grass makes some great bocce courts.
The plan, the plans for this, for this site are on hold until we can access sewer.
It's closer on that one.
If we had access to sewer, we would be near the site plan instead of the demo plan.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing on this that you wouldn't be doing.
No, if we had sewer, we'd still be taking the buildings down, yes, absolutely.
You were going to maintain the slabs on the other plans, I remember, to stay within the footprint, the original footprint?
That, that was the previous plan that we were in here about four years ago with this. I can't tell you that that's gonna be the future plan at this point.
So what, what is your future plan? What is your future plan? What is it?
We were in here about four years ago with the residential development plan.
Oh, residential.
Yeah.
And that was using the existing buildings?
No, that was, that was using existing foundations, foundations only. And that got, right, and that got tied up in the D E C and based on the, on, you know, capacity of the existing wastewater treatment facility was a limiting factor, so...
So basically, they're just coming in, taking apart the pool finally, and then taking down the buildings on the site.
Correct.
And planting or something else.
Be honest with it, if we don't do this, it's gonna become a hazard.
Yeah.
So it's really more of a housekeeping issue than anything else.
Yeah. Tom, anything else?
No. Is this something we're ready to vote on?
No, we gotta, we'd have to go through it. Take a determination first.
Want to find out how far the, was anybody still with the weather? Well, what's your schedule for moving forward?
I'm not ready to move forward, as soon as we get through.
Okay. Anything on, so you have the new secret form?
Yes.
Well, don't we have to know, like, you know, if there's asbestos or something, maybe it would be like a positive declaration or, I don't know. About secret for, for a demolition?
If there's asbestos material on site, we have to reopen the court on labor standards. This is a whole protocol.
Okay, well, would that affect our determination?
Can I handle it within the building permit level?
Yeah, I guess.
You'll need to handle it certainly at that one.
Correct.
The question is whether it's one of the twins or that's the group. If you're in the secret...
I think by note on the plan that all the labor department standards will be followed.
Well, if you only have any program, you know, you, you need some sort of restoration on it.
We can't hear you.
If there's asbestos in the site and you have to restore it, we need a restoration bond in order to ensure that if the work stops for some reason, we're able to stand and replace it, care of it. If that's not necessary, the bond is returned at the end of the activity. The other question of whether there are asbestos materials to be handled by a bond that would be given for the work, that's which would be more expensive. Then also would be a performance bond that would be returned to you when the work is completed.
Is there any other material besides asbestos that can be removed?
Hopefully, there's no there are tanks or anything like that. No tanks or...
I don't know.
You know what, what the fuel system is? Because of the oil, it's gonna be affected.
No, I don't know what it is offhand, but I'll make a determination order. I think it's for the, for the actual individual rooms, I think it's electric.
My gun's there.
It's the common area, I'm not sure. I'll make a determination.
Hot water, it's gotta be here somewhere, right?
Cool heater or something, or a hot water for domestic hot water.
I'll find out.
Just having dealt with these things before, sometimes there's some very tanks in place that has to be dealt with.
So what I would suggest is, once they're ready to go to, once you go to the building inspector, you want to start, before you go to the building inspector to start work, you have your plans filed. We, there should be a determination about the bond that would be required. And you could set a bond for a reclamation or probably tonight, if you have a finite amount of space. And I believe Dave may be able to estimate that, I might be wrong. But you can set a bond for that, the question is determining whether the asbestos materials are there. If they are there, they need to be removed, that point, too, you need to come back and go through a bond process. Tell us what has to be done, who set a bond for it, and what's the...
I don't know what the building's like, I know the age, though. It's likely different, asbestos.
So you're gonna have to submit something, you'll have to have an asbestos inspection done by somebody who is certified, authorized to do it. Will provide that information to the building inspector today. And you'll have a plan for remediation if there is asbestos there. And once we know what that plan entails, we'll know whether, what order of magnitude the bond needs to be. At that point, you will plan if it's acceptable to the temperature of your building inspector. You should have a recommendation for bond, post bond, if permit, do the work. And the certification that will come in court for departmental standard. And when that certification is available, you can look at rather how, yeah.
You are looking at antiquity. Perhaps some of you have stayed at that motel one time or another.
Question on septic systems. How is that going to be taking care of, or is it going to be pumped out, filled in?
It's a SIM, it's a SIM filter, so it's just gonna be capped at this point. The inflow line's gonna be capped. Nothing's gonna be changed with it, that.
Must be a tank there that you're gonna fill. I had it, but...
Yeah, I think there, I think there's more than tanks, yes. On those sites serve by the quarter.
Something's forward?
Yes, yes.
Does your plan require the finish condition, like the sentence on the finish condition, is not gonna be any mounts or holes?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna...
So you're gonna maintain so, so towards...
Yes.
Yeah, that was in the... Go ahead.
Okay. The part two. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? If there's no. Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensitizing use of the land?
I think that's a no.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
I think that's a no.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? There isn't one there, so that's a no. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking and walkway? Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No increase in energy, that's what we know. Will a proposed action impair existing public or private water or wastewater treatment utilities? There will be a disconnection from the water system. The wastewater treatment is on site. Say that there's not going to be an impact, even on the water system. Let's say no to both. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of an important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource? Answer's no. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, earth, and fauna? Answer's no. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Answer is no. Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And answer that no with a note saying that hazardous waste to be disposed of in accordance with state and federal labor compartment regulations?
Okay. Motion to Claire Negdek on the eighty-seven motel demolition?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so what do we have outstanding?
Tanks, demolition bond.
Okay, so we have two bonds. One on the reclamation.
One for asbestos that's required.
And we won't know that one until the state visit inspection. The only thing I have is buried tanks, too, if you had that, okay.
Yeah.
It's called a hazardous waste.
Okay. So we have to establish a bond for each of, each of these things before you can, I can sign off on the plan, so...
This has to go to county, too?
Well, it'll give me time to establish a bond. Yeah, okay. Make a motion to send the eighty-seven motel demolition site plan to county?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll go on to county, it's the first Wednesday of the month, so it'll be on the April agenda for county. And hopefully, when it comes back to county, we can take care of it at our next meeting in April. And then we'll have an idea of at least a reclamation bond, to the extent that we have an inspection, and then we'll do that bond, too.
Could they proceed with the pre-demol asbestos inspection?
I would suggest that, so we can establish what a hazardous waste we have with that, so we can establish a bond.
We'll do the asbestos survey and see if there's any cracks in the ground.
Okay. I wonder if they didn't take that stuff down. I see. Right in the middle. Yeah? Go home and out, if you can, if you can. Okay, all right, thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How we doing?
All right. This is Charlie Frankel, the Talley Peril attorney, also worked on the project back in two thousand and six. Helped me get together some of these documents, he's putting together the easements. And then Talley Peril here. So last meeting, we talked about providing... So last meeting we talked about providing the board some history of the two thousand and five, two thousand and six events at the board. So we did that. We provided a narrative with a bunch of documents attached to it. We also provided, we also talked about providing the cluster objectives, which is required in the code to discuss why clusters warranted. Provided that. Also the cluster waiver request form. Just three waivers we believe that we need and we are requesting from the board. And I talked about it a little bit last meeting, sort of our arguments as to why and we brought it up. So instead of going over it again unless you want me to, I would turn it over to the board and request that you consider these waivers.
Okay. We done some research and got people up to speed on what was done prior to that. And those approve that. Our tracking sheets are unreadable today after we have a meeting and six or seven years later.
But our memories are perfect.
Round to board, is there any outstanding red material? Are there questions or any material that Andy's submitted?
No, I mean, the open space makes sense to me. I don't know. Yeah. Seems to me like a very logical problem.
Careful, I've heard a lot used logical words here. You hear anything?
No, I was, except I was looking for the same two thousand and five.
Okay. Oh, my God. Oh, God, look at that. Any difference of opinion?
No, but I would be looking for a no further subdivision. Give up the right to further subdivision if you're sure there's not segment two lots here, two lots there.
Okay. I think what I have is, I talked about it a little bit on it, is the open space provision of separate conservation easement. It likely to be placed on a farm parcel in the future. I know you're working on that with a number of different people. But looking at the site, what would be envisioned as a conservation easement on the site that you're looking at? You know, area wise, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Beyond the remaining parcel, the farm parcel?
Yeah, is the whole farm parcel?
That's, that would be the idea, is that the whole parcel moved up onto an easement. There's a lot that goes into that and it's really being developed and still talked about. But that would be the idea.
That would be able to address your, you know, further subdivision type of approach on that. That's what I just wanted to get at. So, so it's the entire farm? That would be on the conservation easement that you're looking at. Okay. That's one note I had. Well, that. George, anything?
Well, I just want to clarify, clearly it's different, you can use the same term, but there are different types of conservation easements. One is the land use conservation easement that's required by the code. Another is a conservation easement that typically is granted by a property owner to another plant protection organization for the purpose of conservation, which typically carries a tax benefit. The conservation easement that's required by the code can't be used for that purpose. Basically being changed for a benefit. So when this conservation easement is being developed, I think it's appropriate for the property owner to sort out which of those two things are being accomplished. If there is a requirement in the subdivision regulations that sets a requirement for the size of the conservation easement that seems to be inappropriate, we should look at whether or not waivers justified from that based on the nature of the development. And then the remaining land that's undeveloped and not within the conservation easement as part of by code is then deutilized for a tax benefit conservation easement if the owner so desires. We need to clarify what's taking place here so we don't inadvertently take away that second option by saying it all has to be within the land use subdivision cluster. There's two, the working conservation easement at two levels. We just want to make sure to clarify those two, what's what? What areas should we do land use?
So another, let's see if I can interpret what he said. Look, correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, we can go forward on the subdivision and site plan under the provisions that you are going to create a conservation easement, which would preclude any furthermore subdivision development on the site. And I think that would allow us to meet the code.
Code says you have to do the conservation easement interjunction with the subdivision plan. But that's the conservation easement required by the code.
Right.
And if you read Andy's description, that conservation easement is essentially covers the two new residential lots or is impacts those and not the farm parcel because the farm parcel, we wanted to preserve the right to do the conservation easement, which Mr. Lithgow's described as being capable of being a tax benefit. But it's also administered differently as well through an organization that oversees, you know, the land trust.
And I do want to, on record, affirm his counsel to the local value that trust. And we will typically review both these in connection with that. If this is in the town control, we would not do that in the citizens. But the board knows that relationships.
Everybody on board, what they've just talked about?
Yes.
Charlie.
Oh, good. Pick up a lot faster than you are. Thank you.
Soaking in.
All right, Dave, anything?
I haven't really had much time except for the, the cluster waivers and the cluster narrative part. I really haven't had time.
Well, Andy basically said he's going to put everything that you asked for on the next update of the map. So I think, I think what we need is probably two things I say is the definition of what we're going for. We'll talk about conservation easements to kind of spell that out in the narrative. So we have an understanding on it. And the second thing we would need is the updated map. Getting that, then I could schedule a public hearing on the subdivision. Because then I'd have the latest information.
Now, the narrative we're talking about is on the conservation easement on the farm parcel.
Well, we talk about a conserva, open space here.
Right.
We're talking how the cluster and a conservation easement associated with that.
Right.
I think what we need for, also for that, is what the future plan of the farmlands. Because obviously we have an issue, it looks like flag loss. Okay? Well, what are we trying to protect? We're really trying to protect the rest of the farm land. So I think future plans for that, for farm land side is, would be helpful in to a review point of view or a public point of view on it. Being excruciating detail, but a general overall of why we're doing a cluster to preserve the farmland, what do we do with the farm land we're looking at? You know, of maintaining that as farmland into the future by various methods of transfer development rights, conservation easement or some other method that would protect the farmland going into the future. That's the question that would come up.
So it's more about the intent, the intent on that parcel? And you don't, do you see it as a condition of the approval? Because that, that easement is, could take some time to develop and it's, it's more about the intent?
I think, yeah. I don't want to, at least from my point of view, I don't want to hinge the subdivision approval on when you finally get something on the, on the farm. But I want some documentation saying this was intended going forward. Plus, if you ever came back.
Right.
And said, hey, I want to cut a lot out of this piece of property. The map shows that what that is to, and then you'd have to explain why you can't do that or why not. Well, I'm just trying to document it and take going forward.
For now, we need a note on the map.
Yes.
For the public hearing.
A note.
To set what, what's going forward on the rest of the, on the farm.
Part of, part of what we're concerned about is to the extent, well, first off, obviously it is our, my client's intent to continue to farm it. I mean, that's part of the reason we're here, part of the reason why there's a site plan application in front of you. That's the whole idea. My concern is we put that note on the map and the tax benefit you're talking about goes out the window.
No, it's, well, I don't think it's a condition. I think what it is, is to say that the conservation easement is going to be proposed.
That's fine. That's fine. You understand what I'm saying?
It's not going to prevent you from making an application for a subdivision choose, but it's going to put on...
And, and we would always have that condition, to be honest, is that we, to, to do that further subdivision, we have to come back to you. We all, no matter what we do. So, so you, you always have that control.
The only other here is that it will be of record, it will state that if someone were to buy the property, it would be unchosen. And that's what we want to do.
That's fine. But that's, that's fine. I mean, we...
Again, what I'm trying to do is certain numbers won't last very long on the board.
I'm sorry.
Just the hours and then we don't, some die. Just want to keep, staying on it for a long period of time and retire from it. But it's for a future board. They pick up the plan, you come with it. The first thing on it is the map note brings it up that said, hey, we talked about this. This is what you proposed. Now you changed it. Now tell me why. You know, that's all we're doing.
That's fine.
Hopefully if we get a better record than you try to go back and recreate history from back, back then. So that's what it is.
Okay, no, I just wanted to be clear on.
Yeah.
What our concerns are.
Okay. No, no.
What I would suggest, since you're, you have the concern, is suddenly I'll take a look at it and if it's okay, we'll just move forward.
I'll work with Andy in terms of working up some language and then we'll run by you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay? So when do you think you're going to have a? Truthfully, I could schedule a public hearing for the April.
That's what I was going to ask you. I mean, that's what we prefer.
April thirteenth meeting.
I feel comfortable addressing Dave's comments, nothing in there.
I just want to have a complete set. I just, I wanted people opportunity if they wanted to come and look at it, that they would have it. So that's why I asked you. She said, I, I'm not going to get this done till the beginning of the year.
No, I think there's two weeks. We have two weeks to the next summer, so I'm comfortable doing this and setting the public hearing.
We, we have to circulate the agricultural data statement, valid to the other agricultural waters incentive account.
That what you meant?
Yeah. The, not the parcel next, the next one over is an ag district.
If it's an operating farm, if it's an active farm, it's different.
Okay, we can put it on.
Love to do that and work that.
You can valid it up and then give us that data now.
Okay.
What about these other issues of being, next, the distance of the cluster from other property? Are you requesting waivers on, on the other requirements of cluster development?
Yeah, I don't know how you want to handle the waiver part.
I think he addresses it. And I know I'm not here to make a decision on, on the waivers, but I think you submitted why you think you needed the waivers and, and the distance. I think review of that is, is going to be included in the map. So.
So we know what waivers are a question. You can just, we can play numbers.
Okay.
And we requested last time, I think.
Right, that'd be on the, on the updated map.
It's, it's relatively flat. I, I can send it to Dave, the top of, we have that.
Yeah, but again, I think that's my answer with this stuff that Dave had on there would be addressed on the open drawing. The waiver request is in the file, so that's part of the application before us. So to review and everything. And the waiver request. Okay?
Unless you had something specific on it.
Anybody, you got, you know, you have a copy of all the waivers, right? All right. So that's what we're doing. We'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on Talley Perrow's three lot subdivision for April thirteenth. Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else? Okay. I know the feeling. Okay. Updated map. And up with our worries though. You know it's... Okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So what is that? Is there, you're suggesting that the, their intent for the farmland be put on a map, written as such that this is the intent for the farmland, right? What if they state, rather than have it on a map, which would be filed in the building department, right? What if they have just a statement that would be on file in the building department? I mean, it just seems very cumbersome to put it on the map.
When you file a subdivision map, you file it in the county. And that makes it part of the public record. So if someone else comes along, we have the opportunity to see what's on the map. So we can't claim, I didn't know, I didn't know, I should look in the building department. They... They are charged with notice of all subdivisions like this. So that's the way you can catch against someone trying to say, oh, you know, the real estate agent didn't mention it. And that protects the town and any future on this.
And protects the planning board from, we'll relook at the map, you know, we'll go back to that and look at all the notes that are on the map there. To the extent that something happens and you're looking through minutes or correspondences or it doesn't always, they're not as well maintained, I'll put it that way, going forward on it. So I would, a lot of times, we've gone back to minutes to find out what the intent of something that was done previously. And it's not always clear. But if you have it on the map, the site plan, um, it's right there because that you're up. We always start with the existing conditions and that would be the existing maps.
I mean, the plan has to be revised before it's filed, that's the stamp. Putting a note on is pretty straightforward. Ready?
Put a, a note you want, in your plan.
Okay, thank you. You're right. He doesn't have. He said, you, he, he called, when he called you up? He couldn't find it.
I gave him mine.
He okay if it took him any longer? Oh, no. Why? What are you doing differently?
I just like being here now.
Okay, I'll tell you what I was thinking was, I was talking about them both.
Oh, you were? Okay.
Unless you have something different on the site plan that has not been addressed yet, in your documentation or anything else to that effect.
I was thinking about them both too.
We tend to tie them together when we do subdivisions and site plans of the same parcel. We talk in general. Now, I need a public hearing on a subdivision. Don't have to do public hearings on site plans. Okay, so that's why I scheduled the public hearing on, on it. But unless there is something else that you want to tell me that you haven't told me yet, or any documentation you want to give me that you haven't given me yet.
No, I just misunderstood it.
No.
If you want to put them together.
Well, no, let's back up. They are, they are separate applications and they'll be reviewed together. The public hearing is on the three-lot subdivision. That's, I have that vote here on that. I don't, there's nothing that I have to do, schedule on the site plan, except I'll have to send it to county. But I want to go through a public hearing first, before I send it to county. Okay? And, and there'll be updated maps and all that, so.
Like this is Tom Rhodes, does this have to go to county?
That's right. Wouldn't have to go to county though.
So I wouldn't even.
And it, and as far as I understand, it's a type two.
We could probably type it as a type, yeah, I don't think there's anything going on there.
It's an ag, it's an ag use. I brought it in case you have.
I have one too.
Do you need to step back Sandy and say all of that, everything's good? The temporary housing is that, that building permits or that's SCAT COs or whatever takes from the building department? Is there anything there that's?
Part of the reason we're here.
Yeah. We've talked with Stacy and I don't know if we need to reapply, did you get the COs on the trailer on the housing? She knows about them. Will certainly do whatever she needs. Talk to her.
Do you know?
Well, it's my understanding that, um, under the, you know, that we really ultimately don't have to have certificates of occupancy for farm labor housing. I don't know anybody else amongst my farmer friends when I discussed this issue with them that has ever had to have a certificate of occupancy for farm labor housing. But if you have more than, if you have five or more permanent workers, full-time workers, then the health department is required to inspect the housing for health reasons.
Yeah.
But we, we don't have that either, so, um.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll check with Stacy, you check with Stacy. We'll see where we're at on, on the site plan for, for the, where the COs are required, where the COs exist. From a site plan, you know, if the building's on the property, the buildings on the property should be shown on the site plan. That's all. Yeah.
You do show them.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I just, I'm just talking out loud. So, um, we'll take the action, both you and I. Get Stacy and, and see where we want to go on the, on the, on the site plan. Look, that's the only thing that we have. Yeah. It's just a, and if, she was going to give me a memo, she was out sick with the flu for most of this past week. So I haven't had a chance to discuss that with her. We'll work on that, okay? And you'll know what our discussion is.
Right.
Prior to the next meeting or what have you, okay?
All right.
Well, truth of the matter, I, I'm sorry to confuse you. I run them together.
Yeah, it's fine, but you just.
Subdivision of site plans on the same site. I'm thinking, I'm thinking the whole thing and, and, that's why I didn't mean to shun you or think of that. I didn't want to include anybody, but that's, was the thinking of her, yeah, okay.
All right, good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Purple new board member, one new board member, which is actually a nice number. My name is Charlie Bezivo. I'm counsel for Trans Hudson Management, the applicant here. We've been before the board a few, few times before, I think going on probably about each year now. And the proposal that we have before you has, has been revised. We, we did, from the last time I think we met, we did go and have a meeting with the zoning board appeals about our two variances that we were seeking. They were, I put it kindly, they were not, they were not totally well received by the zoning board. However, we, we looked at that and decided to revise the plan to the one that's been submitted most recently. And this plan is totally code compliant. The parking has been, if you recall, there were two variances we were seeking. It was parking within the front yard setback. We have the corner lots, we have two front yards. And then, and then also the overall signage, amount of signage. But the plan that's been submitted to the board now has the parking removed from the front yard setbacks. The sign plan is, is code compliant, so we believe, we're quite confident we have a totally code compliant application.
So there is still parking in the front, but just not in the setbacks?
It is not in the setbacks, it's not, it's not in the setbacks, yes. The, the other change to the plan, as you may have seen before, we're still proposing 13,000 foot and change single story CBS. We have identified a tenant for one of the pad sites and that's a Five Guys restaurant. Size of that building would be about 2,600, 2,600 square feet. That's included on the plan now. Our traffic circulation remains as we have before. Full intersection on Door Cup Cars, right turn in off of 299 Main Street. I have with me, I have two gentlemen from Mazor Consulting here, the design engineer and also the traffic engineer from, from Mazor. We have updated the traffic report for the project to now include the Five Guys. It also includes traffic volumes with some of the other proposed projects approved and not quite approved yet in the area. We can go into details about, some of the detail about what that traffic study shows, but basically it shows that our project won't have any negative impact on the traffic in the build situation, not compared to what the normal traffic road is out in, in that area. So we're here tonight to hear some comments from the board. Hopefully, we can move the project along and reach some decisions on it. That's basically what we're here for tonight, so.
All right, we'll have a bunch of comments. All right, first of all, I've asked three times for trees that are greater than 12 inches to be included and it states in our most recent memo that they're all going to be cut down. So we definitely need to have that information. Comment 24 on the big packet we got the other day. Yeah, it says, none of the existing vegetation for the developed areas being preserved and therefore individual trees have not been located. So, uh, but for our code need to know greater than 12 diameter trees because they could be potentially important trees that you might need a, what is it, a tree permit to need?
Well, if I could, I did speak with Mr. Klauser on that. As, as I did mention in, in the, in the memo there, we're, we're filling the, the whole southern portion of that site, full of development. So there are no trees per se to speak of that can be saved in that, in that area.
Well, okay, there, yeah, but correct me if I'm wrong, but what does our code say about the 12 inches larger trees? I mean.
Those require that the site plan show those trees?
Yeah.
I think the applicant's point is, you usually show trees when there's an area where you might want to.
Yeah. So why can't you just have that tree going right in the middle of CBS? I'm being completely serious. There are tons of buildings that have trees in them.
Well, we'll be completely serious, that's absolutely not going to happen.
Okay, well, you know. So, um, code wise, what is like, what kind of recourse do we have about just cutting down those trees? My question.
Well, the permit, the permit you resort to is a specific permit on the, for trees that are called over in the, pretty sure right away, the street.
Hmm, okay.
Essentially street trees. Trees that are on the Tirol property, which I assume most of the trees on this site.
Don't matter at all.
They're not covered by the permit. The secret requirement is to evaluate the impact if there are trees or characteristics, trees and territories. There's like a 40-foot state champion tree on the site that might be.
Well, we don't know because the applicant refuses to tell us, so that would be good information to have.
That's, well, not refusing, but there's no such champion trees on this site.
Well, you know, I'm just saying, yeah, I did walk the site and that's the first time I asked you about the trees, so.
I mean, the site, the site itself is already not in a natural condition. It's been substantially modified over the years.
Yeah, there are trees.
They're, they're.
There are trees that they are, are being cleared to facilitate the development.
Yeah, I understand. All right, well, I'll keep researching that.
Can you describe a little bit about, we comment about the pedestrian and bike paths and the traffic there and I have to say that I, I didn't get to read that response, but maybe you can comment on it?
Sure. That's actually another change that we made to the site plan. I think that's been proved not to do anything.
I can point out, yeah, absolutely. So I think everybody recognized the fact that this corner, 299 and North Putt, has been in studies for a link to the Hudson Valley Walk Hill rail trail. It's a connection point that would go down to Henry Duckie DeBois and whatever they would facilitate to go down 299 and collect, or connect into, into Lloyd. We have had, and since the beginning of the project, we've recognized the importance of, of that connection and have met with DOT in Ulster County. Some of the profession groups that we've included since the last submission, when we met with DOT, we looked at this whole intersection here. So we have, on the southwest, we have Sunoco, everyone knows the, the hotel on the southeast and then that vacant parcel right across the street from us. So right now, there is a, there's sidewalk on the south side of 299 and there's a uncontrolled crosswalk there. That's the only crosswalk that exists on the intersection today. So in, in reviewing the project with, with DOT, we propose to include Beshin heads or electronic push button crosswalk improvements that will facilitate the existing crosswalk. We're also looking to include a crosswalk on the north-south across 299 from where this, the existing sidewalk meets up. We'd come over and we'd have a landing over on the opposite side or just adjacent to our project site. So that would also be pet heads, you know, a cross, a crosswalk actuated to go through that, that crosswalk. To improve this, there's always concern with that, that right slip ring or the, you know, the control current lane. That's going to be removed. The right turn from 299 on North Putt will now be a controlled signal, a right turn signal. And then there's also, we're proposing here is a six-foot strike area for a bike, oh, I'm sorry, bike lane. That will go from just over the overpass up to the, up to the light.
That's DOT's approach to getting to town?
That's correct.
Okay, that's why I just.
Yep. We're also proposing from this, this crosswalk that we are establishing, a sidewalk connection all the way down into the site and right adjacent to the, the main entrance of the CBS. And then that connects to a sidewalk which goes across in front of the building. There's a crosswalk of the internal traffic circulation and then connects to the sidewalk over here on the, you know, west side of the site. I'm sorry, east side of the, the light guys. Now, also.
So just go back to, that sidewalk is through your property and through DOT's?
It starts up in the, you know, again, as most of you know, our property, we're about 50 feet removed from the edge of the pavement of 299 to our property line. That's all DOT right away. On this side, the next down to about 40 feet of, you know, in, in, you know, next to 60 feet up here is all right away before we get to our property line from North Putt, which is a county road. So half of our proposed sidewalk down into the site is in the DOT or county right way. Now, we have proposed a connection in the previous plans. Right now, that trail connection is in a preliminary design stage. So there's no construction documents, there's nothing that shows what exactly they're going to do for that particular project. And we have correspondence with DOT that says, do not put anything in that area that would impose issues of construction down the road. We don't know what we're going to do there. We don't want you to put something in there that's going to affect who we'd like to be there. So what we have done is to help facilitate that development in our grading. We're looking to do an expanded shoulder along the front edge of the property here. So that's something, you know, we feel we're, we're getting towards that project to make it a little, for lack of a better term, shovel-ready essentially. Because it expands that shoulder area where they would have their bike lane or their mixed use lane. So that's all that we'd be doing associated to that, to that project. So that's all that we'd be doing associated to that project along our site.
Does the sidewalk come down into the Five Guys?
The sidewalk, yes, it comes down into the site, and then you can walk across the sidewalk here and get to the Five Guys. So it is connected. The other thing that we included on the plan too, based on conversation with the board, was a sidewalk easement that goes fifteen feet into our site along this northerly portion of the parcel. As you, as you travel north, this is the existing gravel driveway that's out there. We met out there to walk the site, or people drive by here. From that point on, you'll see, it goes the North Putt roadway and then it really climbs up into the site. So grading isn't, grading out that area for a potential shared use path may be a little difficult, but we're willing to allow grading to come onto our project site to facilitate something like that. So, I think that kind of addresses the bike path improvements that we're looking to do that were added and changed since the last session. One of the things I just wanted to point out, our right turn lane in off of two ninety-nine, there's a series of such Hudson utility poles here, and there's a terminus pole closer to the overpass or the thruway here, where at that pole, the above-ground electric goes down underground and could go under the thruway. So, we're not going to look to move that or adjust that. So we've shifted our access to the east of that so that it can stay intact and we can get into the site.
What speed line are coming in on that turn?
On our turn here? We had a de-sell lane, so...
Well, it was straight, you know, you made a right and you were coming in straight before, now you're...
It was a little, yeah.
Yeah, now you're up to slow down a little bit further because...
That's like a U-turn.
You're also coming over that bridge.
The radius of that turn though is designed for, I believe, we designed for like thirty mile an hour speed for the turn, so...
Okay, that's horrendous.
So then you're going from like forty-five on two ninety-nine to thirty miles an hour.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, when I visited the site, you know, it seems that the parcel is below, is low.
Correct.
And it would be great to have a three-D something so that we can see, because I have a feeling that we'll be looking at the top of CBS when we drive five.
Actually, no.
Actually, no.
We're really going to bring the site up.
You're going to bring the whole site up? So, okay.
Yeah, the grade along, route two ninety-nine here is about elevation four hundred in the global elevation. Our proposed finished floors for both the pad sites here is three ninety-eight. So it's only going to be, it's only slightly lower than what the existing grade is at two ninety-nine. Otherwise, you know, we are lifting up the entire site to get up that high.
And just to answer, when Justin says that that's the bottom of the building, that the building comes up from there?
I'm sorry, so the floor elevation is that, just slightly two feet, two feet below, and then these are one-story buildings, so they would go up from there.
Can you quantify the bill quantities that will be required at some points during the development?
We are going to run a report number on that so we can determine the traffic, is it probably going on that yet? So we will have numbers on that. With bringing in the material, we are definitely limiting all access to be via North Putt. You know, we're not looking to bring anything out to two ninety-nine for, I mean, even proposed condition, we only have it right in, so we're not looking to have any construction access go out onto two ninety-nine.
Okay, and then just to continue on, while we're on the bike path, the capability of using that right-of-way down on the east side of North Putt around a three-inch upper bike path, partially on your property and then partially on DOT or county, whoever owns that direction?
Correct, yep.
Okay, but since that's not determined yet, we haven't shown that yet, but we have the capability to do that.
Correct, yep, it's like I said, it's still in many stages.
Well, there's, yeah, there's so many going on simultaneously in the town, and it's difficult to figure out which is, at which stage which one of them is. Lloyd is continuing there, bike path out. It's a two ninety-nine or almost a two ninety-nine. DOT has proposed continuing to New Falls, and that's actually generally the end of the conversation is always here, well, where, New Falls, you could stop a number of ways. Two ninety-nine North Putt is there. As you know, transportation is looking at going down North Putt to Henry Devois and getting a grant and some money to build a bike path along Henry Devois and tie into the rail trail there. So, I just want to keep the board abreast that we're not doing anything that prevents those things from happening, even though there are other ways, and like Justin just said, DOT doesn't want you doing anything there because they got plans there. And it's the same thing on Puck Flows. Okay.
The front of the building? Go ahead, Brian.
The overhead lines, you'll have clearance for trucks to make that turn?
Yeah, actually, the ones in this area, so the lowest lines are telecom, so we'll have to coordinate with them to come out there just to look, see where we're at with the elevation levels.
The trucks will be turning, making that turn in?
Oh yeah, that's correct, yep, yeah, trucks can come into the site down.
So is that, would you consider that your delivery entrance?
Depending on where they're coming from, they could come in this way, yes, and then travel to the back of the site.
Will there be a suggested delivery entrance, or it's...
It's really best to plan and they can come in both ways because you can make a suggestion, half the time they'll do just the opposite, so. There really should be an impediment to not come in either way.
No. So the loading dock or the unloading dock is for the back of the building?
Both, yeah, the CBS has its loading dock on the rear of the building here, and then there's a service area again on the backside of the Five Guys.
So I would assume you're using fifty-three-foot trailers when you come in, how are you going to get that tractor trailer?
This tractor trailer would come into, you have to pull up to this end here and then back into the loading space. And then it does make this turn to go around there.
And you don't think there's a safety issue with coming through on the drive-through windows?
No, I don't believe so, I think the most deliveries for these, both of these facilities come in usually off peak hours, so the potential for conflict, I don't think is there.
One of the things that would be good is how often they get deliveries, generally speaking. So, I mean, what kind of vehicles they use for deliveries, you know, so. I mean, if three tractor trailers a week, then you have something, if it's three tractor trailers a day, something different. And if a couple of panel trucks are included, that's, you know, just so we have a handle on that kind of...
Do you guys have any intention of doing any bike racks or anything to make it biker friendly?
Yeah, I was actually going to point that out, I forgot. Both facilities do have bike racks right out in front. You know, per the code, these one per ten parking spaces are required, so we have a bike parking area here. You can already use, which is, you know, today's standard, you know, for bike racks. So there's eight here, and then we have four for the Five Guys. Essentially located in front, as the code is looking for. And then we also had added, per the code, we are running conduit up to these areas along the front of the Five Guys and CBS for the electrical vehicle charging stations. So we are establishing infrastructure should that come down the line.
Will the CBS have a bathroom, a public bathroom?
Uh, it does have a bathroom, yes.
For customers?
Yes, they can.
Are you looking to install it?
Was that correct?
I was just checking.
No, we're not installing, we're putting the conduit in there, it can be installed, so that's all right.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question.
Well, one at a time, it's like a little scratch.
Okay, and in the code, it's create the intent for that option in the future, correct? We're not required to put in actual charging stations, we can, yes.
Yeah, the board will decide if some provisions are required. They're supposed to install it, that's the default, you can propose conduit or some provision for it. Like, so private sewage, raised beds, station?
Yes, each facility will have a septic and a well, just where things are falling on the site. We're getting all of our, both our septic areas in this vicinity of the site. They do have pump stations just from factor of the elevations and how we need to get it to the septic system itself. And they are individual, so, you know, restaurant effluent, we didn't want to combine that into one joint septic system. We have them separated, and they each had their own individual well. The Five Guys well would actually be a public water service, so we'll work with the health department on that. We actually, well, health department on everything with the septic and wells. We had a pre-application meeting with them, so we'll be compiling our submission to them to get that coordinated because with the wells, of course, we need to drill those, and they have a strict palette of testing requirements for those wells. They'll have to...
Yeah, obviously, yeah, when it came in first with this CBS, yeah, the source is the bathroom, I mean, it just had bathrooms.
That's correct.
When you come in the Five, you know, with the restaurant, the water usage jumps up.
The usage does, yeah, and the usage for the Five Guys is going to require a speedy supplement from the DEC just because it's over a thousand gallons per day, so.
For the septic.
For the septic.
So for a thousand but under ten thousand, so it goes into a general permit that they have, so.
Okay. Thousand?
Over a thousand, under ten thousand, so. If you're under a thousand, then that's...
Don't worry, I'm going to know everything about speeds.
Yeah, exactly.
Better go to that class over in Duchess County. Two hours, I don't know everything.
That's exactly...
You can actually exit from there, can you? It's just an entrance. The one on two ninety-nine is just an entrance.
Just a right-in, that's correct.
And the one on North Putt is...
Full access, in and out, yep.
I have a couple of comments, mostly just a discussion with the board about the project. So, to me, this represents a lot of negative impacts on our town, which is what we're required to evaluate. Number one, so many people have moved to town, people who live here, what they talk about over and over again is the importance of small family businesses, no chain stores, and open space. So this project represents irrevocable loss of open space, it is in the business district, but still. Chain stores, the fourth pharmacy in a town of, no, I'm sorry, my comment, in a town of sixteen thousand people, or thirteen thousand, I don't even know anymore. And potentially putting out of business a small family pharmacy that's been in business for, you know, I don't know how long. So, in addition, it is a humongous CBS. If you look at ones in our area, there's the Ryanback CBS, which I don't know if you guys can picture, it's pretty small, fits in very well with the neighborhood, the signage is very good, it's a very, it's an example of great planning in my mind. And then there's the Kingston CBS, which is, to me, an example of the worst planning ever. Humongous McMansion kind of building, just insanely huge.
It's on Schwan Drive.
Yeah, it's like by the bus station?
They're working together, you?
Yeah, exactly. So, just as we go forward, kind of thinking about all these negative impacts, and maybe speaking with applicants about making the CBS a little bit more like the Ryanback and not so much like Kingston. It's already been scaled down from the humongous signage variances that you guys wanted. But, you know, those are my thoughts, just going forward, there we are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as we go through site plan, we'll take another look at it, but we're just trying to get an update on the presentation that we've had and the information that we've received. Any other general comments here?
I'd like to know what your thoughts are on landscaping.
Yeah, we have a full landscaping plan, it was provided in the package. So we'll be proposing, again, with both service areas, back of the site, restrict views of those, not only just from, you know, being screened or buffered by the buildings, but we are looking to add additional landscaping in the rear of the site to evergreen and trees and shrubs. We have a mixture of deciduous trees as well, maples, oaks, a couple of different kinds of maples also.
Are these going to be mature trees, or?
Those would be our shade mature trees, you know, so they'll get the larger canopies, the larger silos here. We're proposing those all along the perimeter of the parking, as well as some of these other island spaces right next to, or closer to the building, again, to help screen the building structure itself. Also, you know, we have full planting beds on the perimeter or foundation plantings. You know, there are different species of hygienia, trimpers, byreias, St. John's wort, boxwoods. Again, thrown in a combination of evergreen and flowering, you know, to create interest throughout the season. And then also our stormwater facilities, we have a series of bio-retention areas which will promote, stormwater will be drained to those areas, and they actually become, if not your, I think everyone knows behind the medical center, there's kind of that little basin in the back there, that, it's not that. It's not like a nibble of grass, like where, it's actually only get a pond of about six inches of water, and then it's all planted, even throughout the base there with different series of grasses and whatnot. Again, to kind of make it look like a natural stormwater infiltration type of feature. Special soils are brought in there to help the stormwater drainage to run through that, and then also the plantings are used to, you know, help uptake, you know, what comes into the, into those bas, or into those biofiltration lines. So I think we have a pretty comprehensive and diverse plant schedule and species list throughout the site.
Are you, are you able to compare this particular unit to any other unit that exists in our region?
Well, from their CBS standpoint, the one in Kingston is probably the closest for a size-wise.
Well, it's two different, if you're, are you looking at the building? Or you're looking at the parking lot associated, or are you looking at the landscaping?
I mean, honestly, I'm looking at everything, I'd love to drive somewhere and see this and see what it's going to be, if I could take a ride to Albany and actually see this, I would.
Would the Kingston one is probably the closest one that's similar in size? And the one thing that's different about that one is it's right up against Washington Avenue, Washington areas. You know, within ten feet of Main Washington Avenue, so it's not, it's not a direct relationship to like what we have because of the enormous right-of-ways that we have before we get into our property and then the setbacks imposed by zoning. We are much further setback, so essentially, if you want to call it a more green buffer between the roadways and us, that's what we have. And that's been further increased when we moved the parking out of the front yard setback and removing that variance. We went from, you know, we're about, there's about an eighty-five-foot immune space area between the roadway and our parking, and then similar at the pinch point over here to like seventy-five feet. So again, I think this is all green space before you get to our development.
And I have another question, what is going on with the drive-through, will that be...
There will be one drive-through.
Twelve hours a day, twenty hours a day?
That would be open for, the proposed hours are seven to eleven, so it'll be open during those times.
And is that only medication that can be bought through the drive-through, or is that any products?
No, I believe it's pharmacy products, yep.
Two questions on the, Travis, do you get a thousand?
We need to get this over to the DOT and...
Yeah, okay. Just basic, page ten, do you want to take out the fueling facility? Sounds like a recap from old.
Yeah.
And you cited here two thousand nineteen and all the... And you cited here two thousand nineteen and all the documents or the plans, say, two thousand eighteen. So, tell me which is which.
It's two thousand nineteen.
And then these are all eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. And by putting in the, just for my identification, putting in the right turn lane off two ninety-nine and taking out the slip there, you improve the traffic conditions?
Yes.
Why didn't they do that in the beginning?
The DOT, why didn't the DOT do it in the beginning?
I'm just.
I mean, they built the road, they should have, yeah.
DOT has slowly changed their policy on the channelization islands. They, A, find them more safer, find it safer to pull the right turn under signal control rather than have the yield control, and then number two is, it, it, as part, as part of doing that, there'd be timing and other improvements that would have to go along with the signal. So, that's how we improve, help to improve the overall operation of the intersection. And that right turn would run under the same time as when left turns are occurring off of northbound corners. So, it would kind of overlap phase there, so that improves the capacity of that approach also.
All right.
The odds are, they won't do it unless the project gets built.
Right. I just, you know, I came out and said, okay, now you gotta stop at the traffic light rather than zipping through.
Right.
And I'm at D, and I, well, I'm at E, go to a D, I improved the conditions and I just.
On the exit out of onto North Putt, initially, I think we expressed, someone expressed some concern about the length of time going on to two ninety-nine. The, on a busy day, that traffic is backed up well beyond the entrance or the exit of your place.
They addressed that in their report, go ahead.
Well, now with the addition of Five Guys, that's gonna really increase the traffic making that left-hand turn out of your parking lot, now.
The, so, part of, like I said, part of what we're doing at the intersection, we'd have to coordinate the timings and the coordination of, between signals along two ninety-nine with DOT. And that would include re-timing that signal so that there's additional time for that left turn phase to reduce the queues so that we don't back up as far.
My concern is, is if you, if you cannot make a left-hand turn out of there, it's going to back traffic up into your, into your parking lot. It's gonna be blocking the two exits going around, and it's also gonna allow, people who are gonna get tired of waiting, they're gonna make a right-hand turn, and then that's gonna increase the traffic.
Right, and like, so, what we did in our, in our report, it's discussed in there, is that by re-timing that left turn phase slightly and giving it some more time, it reduces the queue length, and the queue lengths are in the analysis. And the longest queue length, based on the analysis, after we do these improvements, takes it right up to before the driveway, and that's the way we planned it. And then, but that's, that's like peak, peak times. Your average queue is about half of that, so.
So, the exit there is what, four or five hundred feet from the intersection?
You can correct me, I think it's about three hundred and fifty feet or so.
Three fifty-four.
In, in relationship, just in relationship to where front offers is, your entrance is going to be in what? In that general vicinity down by?
No, not down on that.
Oh, no, no, pardon, before the, before the driveway that goes into the existing bathroom.
Because there is traffic on certain days that's backed up down the front office and ultimately get out of the nine-nine.
There is, in the report, there is a queuing analysis in there.
Yeah, this is that existing driveway where the house is, so you can see where, you know, about a hundred feet south of that. So, closer towards the intersection. And again, the placement of that had to do with also, you know, coming, traveling north on North Putt, there's kind of a knoll, so we had to, we had to space ourselves for site, site distance as well from that area, and the queue length too.
Okay.
Can you, can I just ask another question?
Sure.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the lighting outside? Is it gonna be glowing?
It's gonna light up the apartment, I'd say, yes.
We do have, all site lighting is all LED. It's all full cutoff, so that means there's no light that goes above top of the fixture. Everything is directed down onto the pavement surface or walkway surface. The beauty of that LEDs is to, you know, is that you can actually control them better and their direction and, you know, where they are lighting or illuminating better than your standard metal halide or high-pressure sodium bulb. Even with shields on those, they should still, you know, have more spillover where you may not want light. So, we have full LED pole-mounted lights for all of the parking areas, LED cutoffs on the backs of the building for the, on the CVS for the service area. We have a couple on the Five Guys, and it's still on the light. Like, we show the locations where all these will be. And then also, we have a couple of LED balers just right out in front of the main entrance to the CVS there. We kept them low, as low as we could, so they get that you don't have, you know, your twenty-foot or twenty-five-foot, like, stop shop. You don't have very high poles like that. We try to keep, keep the scale down and keep the light focused where we want it to go. That's what's proposed for the whole site.
One of the things that we'll look at, that Dave will look at and Kelly will look at, and they do have a map, there's a lighting plan, and they'll have to know that it's full cutoffs. They wanna see what the illumination is in various areas on it, and that's what the lighting plan shows.
The lighting plan has a, it's a ten-foot grid, so there's a point-by-point analysis of what the proposed light intensity will be at grade, and we're, you know, we're at zero or point one or, you know, near to the prime lines. So, we've restricted everything to the developed area.
What's the lighting level comparison to two ninety-nine?
Elevations?
The bottom of the.
The bottom of the fixtures?
George, you actually took the height of the light itself, now talking about.
Somebody's driving along to the, like, the light, or the load. The board in this area has been concerned about the impact of lighting from overhead. For example, at the.
So, the, all the pole lights are sixteen feet, that's the napping height. So, again, we're, the grade in general is two feet lower than the roadway there, so the lights would actually be about fourteen feet. So, you're still driving, you know, you could, you could see them, but the whole idea is that you're not, it's not a floodlight that's tilted up that you're looking in for light source itself. Everything's within the housing, and you're looking down.
Nothing on that lighting structure is illuminating two ninety-nine.
Say it again?
Nothing on that lighting structure on that pole is illuminating two ninety-nine.
No, 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 and you can, you can see that on the point-by-point.
Yeah.
We're at our, you know, we're pretty tight to where our parking lot is, that's where the lighting goes over.
What about effect of the thruway? This, will that lighting spill over to the thruway, because that's right there?
No, no, and again, there's, you can see there's existing vegetation that runs between the edge of pavement and our property, which we're obviously not taking, taking away that, that'll be there, so.
So, the pedestrian, the sidewalk will be illuminated also?
Yeah, we do have lighting up in, up in this area. What we also looking to do is work with Central Hudson, there's a pole, you know, right at the corner right here that we look to, to get something mounted on to help illuminate that sidewalk.
Was a minor point you want to change in page eleven of your traffic impacts. You're saying that, paragraph four, you're saying if somebody enters to access CVS Pharmacy or the fueling facility.
Yeah, we'll take that out.
The Five, Five Guys got a drive-through?
No, no, no drive-through, there's only a drive-through on the CVS, a single lane drive-through.
What time does the Five Guys close?
They're open from eleven to ten. There's a drive-out that goes around that side of the building.
And, okay.
Yep.
This is, that's for the parking here?
Yeah, to provide through, through access to the parking. Yeah, again, the service areas, the loading, the dumpsters, again, all pushed to the back of the site.
Can you show us where the dumpsters have gone to this?
Yep. This is the Five Guys dumpster, so again, access can come up through, pick it up, and then he's out to North Putt. And then again, the dumpster here, for CVS on the corner.
I'm not sure is the chain they do, they do records?
Right.
I don't, I don't think so.
What sort of fill are you gonna use, and do you know how much fill you're gonna use?
It's gonna, it's gonna be like a structural fill that we'll have to bring in. Can't have too many fines in it, it would create sponges to narrow it, because we're.
Well, they tear it down at Motel across on the other side of the floor.
Hey, we're not sure that's a specific.
But it does, it varies, you know, here, this portion of the site, we're kind of at grade back beside, there's about four feet of cut or so. Obviously, the, some of the more substantial fill points are up in the southeast corner here, we're about fifteen feet. We have areas up in this corner with about ten feet, so it's.
In terms of cubic feet, you know?
I don't have a, a big analysis of what the cut fill amounts are, but. Yes.
We have to do, but we wanna make sure we're, you know, pretty set up where the building's.
That's correct, yeah, minimum four inches of topsoil on top of all this, in all the proposed lawn areas, and then all the landscape beds, we'll have to at least have a foot of that.
What's the plan for snow management?
Snow management, we have.
It's not gonna snow, I'm sorry.
We have some open, this current, sorry, the driveway aisle in the back here, you know, is all open, so we'll have some places where we can dump snow in there. Some of the islands that aren't planted out could facilitate that, as well as even on the backside of parking here, we have some swales and whatnot that, you know, it's going to the drainage practices, so we can use those as well.
You know, I'll have the typical, our standard note on your site, dealing with snow removal once in excess of five feet.
Do you have a, you could give us that number?
Anything, if Stop and Shop has it, and the last one, Shop Right had it, is that you can't pile up the snow any higher than five feet. If once it gets up to that, anything over that, you have to haul off and remove.
I saw them do that the other night.
Yeah.
Because I think they were at fifteen feet.
The way we had this past winter, I can understand that, and, you know, we threw on it.
Can I, I mean, there's a number of questions I wanted to, Five Guys, we had just some architectural elevations. They weren't ready for the submission, but if I can give them, if you had any feedback you want to give us tonight, or do you want to just?
Kelly, and if we can either pick them up or put them, or hold them out. I think.
I have a PDF.
Yeah, but we just, we literally just got it before we came, so that's why.
I think the ink is still wet, so I don't know.
All right, she wanted, awesome, yeah.
Just give them to Kelly.
Mike, while I was away, there was somebody working, and they did do a review on this. I haven't checked all of it, I've got this marked as graph, but it does have some technical information that Justin needs to take care of.
Okay.
Okay.
Stormwater permit change the end of January, and the design manual changed right after that, so there's some stormwater issues that can be worked on.
Well, actually, we submitted a preliminary submission for that change, so we should grandfather in for the prior speeded treatment.
Well, if you're using bio-retention, that's got ponding, and I don't think that's allowed per new design.
The new design? Are you talking about the new design?
The pond was wrong?
Ponding is only allowed for very temporary, otherwise you're drowning your plants all the time.
Correct, it's only a six-inch ponding that has to be disappeared in twenty-four hours anyway, correct?
Right, you were talking about keeping a pool there.
No, 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 it's, it's not a, no, no, it's not a permanent pool. I said, it only fills up to six inches of ponding, and then it perks through that media.
Okay, I didn't, Matt was thinking you were trying to maintain a pool in there.
No, no.
Okay, right, Matt.
There's also pretreatment that's needed for the storm septic units that the DEC requires now, so that's gonna be a change. And that's not the new design manual, that's a new person at the DEC, it's, it's not petting hurricane. It's, it's the way that's interpreted and very serious. And I'll get this up to Ken Worsted. Do you have an extra copy?
That's what I was gonna issue for, if, I have one, I brought the one that we spoke about.
Do you have an extra copy?
But I have, I have a plan set and a extra traffic report that I can give you tonight.
Can we get that on PDF?
Yes, I was emailing, I emailed that to Kelly.
It just came like three hours ago.
Kelly, Kelly probably got it right.
To.
So, it's in, it's in the PDF, if you want a hard copy, read this, I have a copy.
Most important part's the first ten pages.
Then you start seeing diagram after diagram after diagram. I had to figure out, oh, yeah, this is AM, this is PM, oh, this is Saturday.
This is one of the, if I can get something from the DOT.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look at that. I'm afraid of what I go.
Kelly has that to remove.
I emailed it to you today.
Okay.
If they can get to you, I'll send it tomorrow.
DOT needs a set of those too, I can't, it'll just take PDF, I'll find out.
I mean, just let us know.
Yeah, just let us know, we'll give you, all right.
I just want to get rid of all those copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can understand, I can understand.
Yeah. Okay.
Great, just a quick question, do you have actual counts for Five Guys, or is it just IT?
Actual traffic counts? No, no, we don't have actual traffic counts that we don't know. For CVS, we have, we do have, we did one in Chester within the last two years that we compared to, and they were very similar to what IT, which will be used for the estimates, showed. But for Five Guys, we don't have actual traffic counts tonight.
One thing that would be really helpful to answer the question is maybe a visual or of what a CVS would look like from somebody standing on or car passing on two ninety-nine. I mean, we've got a lot, everybody knows it as a hole, you know, we're gonna fill, and, and I think just trying to get a judgment of where it is, because if you look on the other side, the motel, it's rooftop viewing, you know?
Now, clearly, this is not that.
I know.
We.
And again, it doesn't have to be.
What was the direction, I'm sorry, you were speaking from, like, Sunoco looking across the street?
So, it's gonna be a hotel across the way, seven, five streets?
Hampton, three.
Three?
Three.
Seven stories.
Yeah, I think the Motel view is like sort of across two ninety-nine from the Sunoco station, and, you know, looking, looking into the site that way, so, so, all right.
I can create something, just to give a visual for the board, to get a comfortable of what it's looking at when it drives by on two ninety-nine.
Does the rendering change for the building?
Not for the building, no, no, but the, the, the position of it now is, is further back, so it's gonna, it's gonna look, it's gonna look a little different.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to get. Not only do we have a height difference, but now if you're on two ninety-nine or at Sunoco, you're, you know, it's, you know, it's a hundred feet off the edge of the road.
It'll look like it's sitting at a park, so it's a little.
So, just trying to give a visual on it, doesn't have, perfect, doesn't have to be, but just to give a concept of that, we've done some drawings of where it is, and now we just wanna take that and move it back to a road and take a look.
Yes, I can.
Is this Five Guys, like, is that a standard-sized store that they have, or? How could we figure out?
Twenty-six hundred, I think, is, is around the upper end of their, of their store sizes, um, it seats about-
I mean, can you guess that, like, how many?
It's sixty, it has sixty-five seats in it.
Seventy-five seats?
Yep, um-
Change every half hour, or every hour, or every fifteen minutes, or whatever?
They wish, yeah.
Yeah, sixty-five of the stores.
Much, much, much of dinner crowd.
Where's the nearest one, then? There's one up in Kingston.
One in Kingston, but I, that's, uh-
Yeah, it's different.
There's more.
There's one in Newburgh, but again, it's, it's in a-
It's inside a, just a mall.
There's one that's in the kitchen.
I think there's one in the kitchen.
We have one in Kingston, too.
Yeah.
They have very few freestanding ones, so that's-
But Kingston is freestanding.
Is fencing freestanding.
One on, yeah, but that's-
I've been at, I've been at-
That's small, that's a small one, that wouldn't be this one, I don't think they have-
Maybe fifteen hundred square feet, if that-
If that, there's probably, you know, five tables in there, looks like. I don't know, but yeah, so, no, that wouldn't be, that's what I was thinking of.
We're gonna have, what did she say, how many tables, we're gonna have?
Sixty-five seats.
Seats.
Sixty-five seats.
Yeah, four to a table, so, you're talking about fifteen tables.
So you wanna see some numbers about the anticipated turnover?
I think it'll be helpful-
Yeah, I think just to back up the traffic study numbers, going, coming and going. No, it's interesting, you know, the Five Guys in Kingston is probably go up, you know, standard drive-through window, would it be a drive-through, but basically, it's a buy and carry, I, I don't think, anyway, it stays in there. This one's more of a restaurant type of, uh, that's why I asked about drive-through windows and everything, so, I, I wouldn't want that. Alright, um-
The one wish I had is like, so we can get, you know, keep the process moving, can, can this go up to the county and just start getting the county's comments on it too? I mean, I don't, I think most of this stuff the county would be interested in, there's already there on the plan.
Just wondering if it might be better that we wait till we get, uh, Ken Worsted's comments, since traffic is a bigger issue on this, if that might help the county get their review.
Yeah, because I'll ask for numbers, I'll send it back and say, um-
Well, they actually, our initial traffic study, we did run by the county, uh, as a draft, and we didn't have any, they had some minor comments that we addressed, so I think that format-wise, and, um, study information is, is there.
You wanna make contingent upon, you can send it up, if Ken can get the comments to the planning board, and we can send it to county before vehicle meeting.
Why don't we send it to county, and if we get Ken's comments in, we'll get, I can get them in, look at it later, we can run it up, you know, a couple of days before, if we have to go that way.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because then maybe we can get their comments back by the April meeting, and it would be moved on that, so.
Okay.
And then, what is our April, what's our next up, is the next meeting review, or is it a public hearing?
Okay, generally, we-
Getting ahead of myself.
Okay, let's, let's take the first step, I have a motion to, uh, oppose the Trans-Hudson CBS, Trans-Hudson Management Corporation project to county. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll send it to county for their April meeting. Should've sent it from March here.
Very little on it.
Um, okay, next question, uh, we can continue review of the, um, uh, site plan, but we have to really go through a, I'll call it a preliminary seeker, to see if we have all the documentation. We need to do a seeker determination, and that's basically going through to see if we have all the information we need, and in sufficient quantity to make, uh, a rendering on, on that. I think that's, make sure it's all there for us, and if we have any outstanding questions, uh, it's really a preliminary run-through, there'll be things that, this is on final site plans, um, there'll be things that won't be there, and, um, we just gotta separate what is and what isn't.
Justin, can you use the old short form on this, because this project came about before the new one came out, or, but I know you certified the old one, can you still do that, or you, should you put together a, a long form, a new long form?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I thought, um, your previous comments were, uh, on the, uh, the old form, and, uh, we did submit on the old form, I didn't think, I thought prior to, you know, that came out, after-
It's the general grant authority provision, which said you can submit on the old form if you, if you're before the board, before a certain date.
Yes.
That was done in nineteen, uh, two thousand thirteen, uh, and a lot of time has passed, and this site has been modified in some respects, I'd say you would be cleaner if you had that.
I am gonna strongly encourage you to do the new form, because, A, we've been working on conceptual plans, uh, for a while, and you know that, and I think we're down to getting, uh, a full application, the preliminary site plan, I would much prefer to have the new form, uh, associated with it, so, why don't you work up that, and, uh, then we'll go from there.
The new long form?
Yes, the new long form.
One, one of the things I'm gonna propose to board is we go through the workbook, so, yes, the way this long form is implemented, it'll be helpful having a long form to sort of track that.
Well, you want me to hear your job, okay, okay, I understand.
What is, uh, the, what is your best guess of moving forward construction?
We, we'd like to be, be in construction as soon as possible, yeah, it's, it's actually rather critical that we get into construction this, in the summer, whereas lateness spring is possible, would everybody consider spring?
Again, I, I think that's, that's key, because you still have a number of calculations to go, to get to final site plans, you know, we talked about fill, and just even the fill and hauling, and things of that sort. So there's, you got a bit of work to do, still go, um-
I wouldn't say that far.
You could reduce a lot in a short period of time.
I'm sure you can, but I, I, from our point of view, um, go into county at first, and then we can put it on the agenda for, uh, and go through a preliminary review, the seeker determination,
That would be helpful.
To see what we have, what we don't have, and while you're going through it, you can say, oh, I got this new form, oh, they may be looking for this, do I have that, okay?
That's, that's fine.
That's fine, that's fine.
And you can submit, you know, updated documentation on, on that, okay?
What's that?
You started the architecture, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had architectures before, when the building was up closer, now we have to, have to modify them, so.
Well, we had the, you know, we had the elevations, uh, for the CBS, and I just dropped off those for the, uh, the Five Guys.
Yep.
Yeah, I was thinking, do you actually have some of the building?
Oh, um-
You're ready to build, if you-
It's, the CBS, I believe, is, is, you know, has some CDs ready, uh, from an architectural standpoint, Five Guys will be right along with that, so.
Okay.
Do you, or is there a point to new firm, Mr. Bikehead, again?
What?
Bikehead's ready because of the cell connection and-
None, none of that's changed since the last time.
Well, actually, we've, we've added-
We've added stuff to, here, to address their comments, so.
Okay, well, so, um, send something to Bill, and let him know, you know, we've got a resubmission, if Justin doesn't know, resubmission from them showing the, uh-
I can't talk to him.
I, I can't talk to him, I just got a call. I, I, okay, I, I will send something to Bill alone, that we have an updated, uh, site plan, um, that shows the, uh, discussions with D O T, and shows the right-of-way along five corners, uh, to get that out about. Okay, so I'll take care of that, actually. Okay, anything else that you're gonna want?
I think we'll save in April then, so it's, uh-
Alright, then we, uh- Thank you. Okay, I'm moving along, I come in to tell us, you have any day now, must be the D E I S. Okay, first quarter, not maybe early April.
Is it a hard copy? He sends the other one, I hate to send them the other one, I like them both. I like it when it's a lot of-
No, we're just putting quite that.
Yeah, Ellie went to one, but I have, I do have to go to more.
I, well, yeah, I, I just, um, I've got, um, one, something, um, what's, as I was, the primary scheduling, the primary, the, uh, the files, the, 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 uh, materials, the files now. With your, with files now. But this is bad for nothing, I think, you want the, since, uh, you're saying, well, you're saying- Yeah, well, I did, I'll, I'll change, I'll change number.
Yeah, she used to be that way, but now it is, yeah, it changed. It's a good call, yeah. Yeah, I get that, you know, yeah, uh, it's on the cover.
Wait a minute, boards, don't go home yet! Don't go home yet! You got the chairs, good thing I put the chairs-
Thank you.
Maybe I should do planning board administrative discussion first, um, the one thing I wanted to just bring up is we have a first-ever, as far as I actually recall, a joint meeting with the village planning board. Our next meeting here on the twenty-third, um, one of the topics, and I hope to get the report, if I can find it, um, they have re-zoned their B three, which is the, uh, thirty-two North, um, zoning. And one of the things that we always look at is trying to work on the edge, and how do we do our north, the thirty-two North, uh, that we do have a lot of commercial property on, and what are the things that they did? And what are the things that make sense for us in, in conjunction with them, um, that's one of the issues I, I have, uh, one of the topics I have. Jeff is, uh, gonna give us an update on where and what, our role in, in going forward on the comprehensive plan, I saw big smiling faces in the paper recently, so, um, I think that was moving forward. I just wanna, how our boards can interact on, on, um, the joint comprehensive plan, um, there are other things that, that, uh, George sent me out a list. If you have any comments at all, I promised I'd get Maurice, who's chair of the, uh, village planning board, a list, or possible agenda, so he could have it at his next meeting Tuesday. So I'm gonna draw up something and, um, put it down, and probably have more topics that we'll have time for, uh, but if you have anything in mind, um, that could go onto that, feel free to send it to me. Um, I'll copy you on the list, I sent to Maurice, uh, it's flexible, I do have Dennis Doyle coming to the meeting, so if you really wanna, yeah, he, he will give you his idea of what thirty-two North should look like, I'm sure. Um, but, uh, he said he, he would come to the meeting too, but I think it's an opportunity to, to see where we can work together with them, um, there may be areas that you know what the village does better than I do, and say, hey, you know, that would be an area that we should really talk about, um, on it, infrastructure is great, we could go on forever on, uh, on infrastructure, but think about it, I, you know, I'm kind of up on actually having a meeting with the village.
Here's your question, will, will we be discussing the, the new bridge at all?
There is a technical steering committee meeting on March eleventh here to talk about the new bridge, I think it's sometime in the afternoon, do you know anything about it? Two o'clock?
I, I'm on it, I'll be, uh, two o'clock here, on, I believe, March eleventh.
On March eleventh, yeah.
March eleventh, two o'clock here.
God, this is Wednesday.
Uh, there'll be, uh, there's representatives in, from the village, uh, there's representatives in town, uh, I apologize, I'm on the list with me, uh, Bill Weinstein is on it, uh, Rich Gottlieb is on it, Dennis Doyle, me, a couple others, I apologize, I didn't bring them with me. I can have, I can send it to Kelly, she'll send it out, this will be the first meeting on it, and just to first discuss what the next steps are gonna be.
There's all kinds of, um, talk flying around that they're gonna start soon, or is there a date to start doing it, is it planned?
Great question, uh, after March eleventh?
Oh, I don't think anything's starting on that bridge, I mean, we're at, he, Dennis said we got the technical steering committee, or technical committee to look into this, we set the same thing up for, uh, South Plut corners, and it worked really well, but when are we building South Plut, next year?
Uh-
We're in two fifteen.
I think two sixteen, summer is a possibility, there'll be an acquisition this year, so.
So, I think this bridge isn't going anywhere in the next, rest of this year, that's for sure, um, on it, but the talk, when we said Bill Weinstein is to talk about-
If someone says it's being done soon, they know more than everyone else, so, I, I will, I'll take you on, but no, I'm not aware of anything under the heading of soon, but I would like, I'll let you know after the eleventh, because I, I have not heard any.
So that's the first meeting of the, of the group.
That's the first meeting, so.
I thought I read it somewhere, too.
Yeah, I thought I read it somewhere, that they were gonna start this spring.
Did they start tall?
Yeah, they're gonna start discussing it this spring. I think that's the best answer, so anyway, um, if you think of anything, or go of anything, I'll get the list out, um, give me your ideas, and, uh, I think we have, uh, yeah, that's the only thing we have on the agenda is meet and greet, and talk with them, and, and try to get some discussion of where we can do joint work together. There may be areas that we can talk about that we're not doing, that makes some sense, um, oh, yeah, I remember we had great, great discussions years ago, it was on signs, um, but that went through the village and through the town, and, and discussions on that, and, but- and through the town, and, and discussions on that, and, but, you know, it doesn't...
Well, we ate something, it'd be great, it's probably too much to ask for.
It's tough to get...
I'm not volunteering.
It's tough to get people to go to two meetings a month, and then if you start the village, it's four meetings a month.
Yeah.
Um, so, it becomes problematic on that. But there's nothing wrong with why you can't change minutes with each other.
Yeah.
Copy, you know, they should send us a copy of their minutes, we'll send them a copy of ours. I mean, that's the kind of communication. We can send them a copy of our agenda, they can send us a copy of their agenda, um...
Sign up on our website for e-notifications and get all our judges' minutes. I did that, you know, now I get them all twice, it's great.
Now you get them all twice. So, I mean, there are things like that, that we can go over on it, so, um, I think it's a good, good opportunity for discussions going forward on it, so, think about it.
And just, Mike, if I may, if you want to comment?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, also, on 32 North, keep in mind, there was an application made towards to annex some land on 32 North. Uh, I apologize, this is named with the, Kelly, the...
Casano.
Thanks, Casano, I thank you very much, Casano property. Uh, we did extend it last meeting, uh, there's a deadline, and someone requests annexation, I'm looking at her attorney.
The rest of the line?
He did indicate to us, we can, did both parties agree, we can extend it, and we did extend it until September, uh, because you do have to show and make it very simple here. George could expand if he wanted to, but there does need to be, it does need to show community good. Why are you annexing the land? So, the request is there, where he was going to draw up some type of plans, for those who remember, uh, when we annexed the Niven Land, uh, he brought along a, a pretty extensive set of plans for that property along with the divorce. Uh, so, we're waiting for Casano to come back to something a little bit, not detailed, but some slight plans, and then we would have to set up, we'd want to discuss it with board, and then also discuss it with neighborhood members. Because he, the discussion is about making it more of a B2 character along that part of 32 North. And I, I say B2, because that's their designation, or, or B in our designation, so, just kind of keep that in mind, too, if it's something that when you're discussing with them, they want to talk about the annexation on that property. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion, if we're having this joint meeting, if you guys are out and need something, think, that's open? And if you're out of the way, rejected, so, you can have something about, you can look at it.
This is worth a thousand words?
Indeed.
We'll keep that in mind. Okay. Meeting to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
So, it's a...
Yeah, okay.